All meeting to order, all rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do all members who are present approve of the agenda? We have a revised agenda in front of us. We have two additions. Seven G, approved resolution 2020-102 declaring equipment excess. And seven H, approved resolution 2020-103 authorizing acceptance of donation. There any other changes to the agenda? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the November 4th, 2020 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed on those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2020 regular meeting as presented?
I make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. This will bring us to our reports of presentations. Police Department monthly report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for October 2020, some of the numbers we had. We had 13 alarm calls, 35 personal assist. We did 118 assists for businesses. We had 44 assists for other agencies. We had 23 citizen contacts, 10 dog complaints, eight driving complaints. We had 19 matter of information calls, 26 medical calls, 10 vehicle accidents, 10 patrols at school, 63 patrols at Wilmar, 18 suspicious calls. We had eight thefts. We had 10 unwanted person calls, two verbal disputes. We gave out 90 verbal warnings. We had total ICRs of 552, verbal warnings of 90, for a total of 642 for total activity. Compare that to 2019. We're up 103 calls. In 2020, we're down on warnings. It's about, by month, very comparable. We're up 11 calls and down on warnings. Otherwise, that's all I really have.
Okay, council, have any questions?
I just had one question because it stuck out obviously as a bolded. The predatory offender, level two. What are those? Are those, you're just checking in with them, or are they?
We have approximately 10 offender offenders. And yes, we were required to check on them twice in a year. So we do our routine checks on them.
Okay.
Yep. Make sure everything's up to par.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Job, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For October 2020, a few things we've done. In the Streets Department, we had two snow events, so that caused some plowing and hauling on our end. T8, one of our older plow trucks had hydraulic cylinder rebuilt that was leaking. And a couple other minor repairs are made to that truck. The first 500-hour service was completed on the new loader. NUS Truck sent a technician to assist with this. And that was part of the deal when we purchased that from them. So there was no charge on their end for that. The new drop spreader arrived. And it's currently being wired by our staff to work on the tractor or the tool cat. So once it's installed, we'll get it calibrated and put in service. Christmas light repairs are taking place, preparing to put those up next week. So just going through bulbs and making sure that everything works before next week. Furnace in the shop quit working. And due to the age and the issues that were found with it, a new one had to be installed. The airport, some repairs are made to the Pappy Light System, so that's operational again. There was a 50-10 inspection done by MINDOT. And we are addressing the items that they found during their inspections, such as some tree removal. A couple of signs had to be installed. And we're marking off some areas, the crops are getting a little close to the grass runway. So those things are taking place right now. The arena, we had two water valves that failed that had to be replaced and repaired. The Olympia needed a couple of repairs that were completed. The new Olympia was actually scheduled to deliver today. But the delivery company had an issue with one of their trucks, so they'll be bringing that tomorrow. The Hockey Association installed new rubber flooring around the south end of the boards in the arena. That turned out really nice and I think is a good addition to the facility. We accepted a donation of six picnic tables from Melanie Quick that she made. And we picked up from her, so we thank her for those. We had one employee quarantined during October for exposure to COVID case. And this week, we have one employee being tested for COVID. But he was not around any other staff, so there's no exposure concerns for anyone else. So that's where that's at for us.
Okay. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Commission Report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a copy of the agenda from our last meeting on November 10. And we did not have any public hearings at that meeting, so it went rather quickly. So we just kind of went over the building permit reports for the month of September and October. Those are included in your packet. Do you have any questions for me about those?
Questions? Oh.
Okay, thank you.
City Engineer Report, Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On the 2018 capital improvements project, we have a final pay request included in this council tonight. And yeah, so I'll be closing out that project. And the 2020 capital improvements project, we're working with a contractor on the next pay application. That'll include all the quantities to date for this year. And then I'll be kind of lasting until next spring. Also during that project, we were able to work with the car wash owners at Brothers Market to get the roof drainage kind of corrected up there. So it's, now it's going to the pond where it should go. So. And then update on the Unger property. We're currently working on a preliminary design and costs for the EDA. Kind of a shovel-ready concept design. And that'll be, we'll have a draft report ready for the next council meeting, December 2nd for that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Airport Board, Ricky?
So the airport board met today. It was a rescheduled meeting because the last meeting was Veterans Day, actually. Just had a couple updates on the zoning ordinance project that's still sitting at MINDOT. Once they return that, if they have no changes, we'll be able to record that zoning ordinance. And then that'll be a completed project. The 2021 project has been sent to the FAA as the intended project. So we would, we apply to them for the grant. The grant won't be issued like till August, because that's their fiscal year. Starts in July, or starts later with the state. But we will be working forward on getting the design and everything done. And so the project cost, total project cost for that is $576,000. And of that, $76,000 is the city share, the balance is FAA and MINDOT. We actually have $55,000 of that already in the account. And there'll be $15,000 transferred in at the end of the year from this year. So we'll pretty much have that project funded before we even start with it. And then we also had discussion on the timing to begin the crosswind runway relocation. And that's not on for a couple of years yet, but they're beginning the discussion on it. And then the one other thing that Ben mentioned in his report about the 50-10 report. And we did discuss, discuss a little bit about that, making those improvements at the airport and responding to MINDOT. Because every time we have that inspection, we have to send a letter back and say what we did and what we're intending to do about the issues that they find out at the airport. Which, most of them were pretty minor this time, so they shouldn't be a big issue. And we've already taken care of most of them. So that's all we have for the airport.
Questions, concerns? Okay. Move on to action items. Seven A, approved resolution 2020-99 authorizing the inter fund loan.
So when the city council opted to proceed with the 2020 Street project for the improvement of Elm Street South, Elm Street North, and Lake Street. At that time, we made the determination that the city's share of the project and also the amount to be fronted on the assessments, so both of those pieces would be borrowed from the hospital fund, which is Fund 290, as an alternative to outside borrowing due to the relatively low amount of funding that was needed. And so I did prepare a resolution for you that would define the terms of the inter fund loan, which we're recommending to finance $725,000 over 10 years. So every year beginning in 2022, that would be the first payment date. So we collect revenue in 2021 and make the payment at the beginning of 2022. And you can see the amortization schedule that I have laid out there. The annual payment amount would be $80,711.73. So that will be a combination of special assessments that we collect and tax levy that we put into that fund. And that should self-fund itself. And this money in the hospital fund is the undesignated portion of that fund. When we entered into the agreement with Centra Care, there was money that came over to the city that we designated only for hospital use. But since that time, we've had interest. And the interest on the operating loan that we gave them has built up. So we were able to borrow that money. And it gives us a better rate than we would be able to borrow it on the outside. So. What I have in front of you is resolution 2020-99 defining the terms of the inter fund loan.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2020-99?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution 2020-100 approving write-off of bad debt.
Every year at the end of the year, we remove from the accounting system uncollectible accounts. These include monies that will be sent to collections. And also money that has been, or funds that have been certified to Stearns County. And you did that a couple meetings ago. And then also those that are simply written off. The amount we're proposing to send to collection is $4,125.39. The amount certified to taxes is $4,8723. And you took action on that earlier. And the removed or corrections is $1,723.60. Those mostly are, there was one duplicate invoice that got sent out there. There was one, a sidewalk repair that the property had changed hands in the interim. And it just got kind of messy. And a lot of them are just interest on a paid, you know, that the interest accrues. But then they paid it in the interim, so we have a crossing in the mail type of a situation. And there was a few of them there on the sidewalk snow removal, where the timing of the sidewalk snow removal. And we didn't have good pictures of some of them to show the resident that we actually did the work. So we're just asking to remove those as well. So a total, grand total of all of these amounts is $6,336.22. And that is resolution 2020-100.
Questions, concerns? Something we do at the end of every year. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2020-100?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi. Second by Diane. Any other questions? All the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven C, approve advertisement for cleaning services.
It's been four years since the city went out for quotes for the cleaning services for city buildings. And this is the city hall, the senior center, and the airport. And in that city hall, it includes the fire department and the police department as well. We're asking that the city consider updating the duties list and then also reviewing the agreement. So that can go to the personnel or the policy committee to review the actual agreement that we have with the cleaning service. And then advertise for persons or companies interested in performing the duties. The current agreement is up on February 20th, so we have a little bit of time to work through this. And of course, the current cleaning service would be invited to be considered for continued service as well. And so what we're asking tonight is just to authorize updating the agreement and duties and advertising the position.
Questions, concerns?
Would you just want to internally update that list? Or is that something that should go to a committee to consider? What would you like to see?
What I'd first like to do is just to go through the list and talk to the different staff members and see what they've noticed maybe is not done, or what they would like to have done or added or change. And do that at a staff level, and then run it by the committee as well. And then the agreement, I think we have a good agreement already. And then I would also run that past the league. They have a free service that will review our agreements. And then I, well, would send that to the committee. So I think both of those items, we would kind of internally get those put together, then send it to the committee for final review, and then bring it to the council.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to authorize the updating of the agreement and duties and advertise for the position?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven D, authorizing advertisement, authorizing advertising for eligibility list for full-time police officer.
So Chief Fredericks and Sergeant Joe Jensen have requested that the city council authorize the creation of a police officer eligibility list. This will enable them to begin the process of recruiting and selecting candidates for potential upcoming positions within the department. Once advertised, applications will be accepted, interviews will be conducted, and associated background investigations will also be conducted. We could potentially have an officer in place sometime January or February under this timeline. So what we're looking for tonight is simply the creation of a police officer eligibility list. We're not asking to hire anybody at this time. You do know we have it in the budget to consider a position. And then we also have another position that will become vacant. So we potentially could have one or two officers that could come out of this. Actually, three, if the list gets long enough and we go further into the next year. So we're just asking to let us get started on creation of eligibility list.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to authorize the creation of the police officer eligibility list?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi?
Second.
Second by Joe? Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven E, approve resignation of EMT.
Ambulance Director Kathy Struford has submitted a resignation on behalf of Noe Zamora, effective November 8th, 2020. He is one of our newer EMTs and decided that this just wasn't for him and he was going to be moving on. So we're requesting to accept the resignation of Noe Zamora, effective November 8th.
Do I have a motion to accept his resignation?
Motion to accept his resignation.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven F, approve final pay request, 2018 capital improvement project to Bright Buck.
This is the final pay request for Bright Buck. The total amount earned under this contract was $3,727,259.00. And of that total, the majority has been already paid. With an amount due with this request is $30,727.26. That is the final pay request to Bright Buck Construction. After this is paid, we will have another invoice from StanTech for all the residual finalizing of everything. And then we'll be able to close that fund. Any residual dollars left in the fund will be transferred into the bond fund then for payment of the bond. So we're requesting to approve the final pay request to Bright Buck for $30,727.26.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the final pay request number 17?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven G, approve resolution 2020-102 declaring equipment excess.
Back in 2012, the city purchased a Dodge 3500, three-quarter ton. We took the box off of it. Any of you were here at that time recall that we had the box taken off. And we have been storing that. And then we had a city-owned flatbed that we installed onto that chassis. The removed box, like I said, has been in storage out at the airport. We thought someday we'd put it back on when we were going to sell the vehicle. However, with the retrofits and welding that were needed to get the flatbed on there, there's, it's not coming back off in order to put this box back on. So we're, we know, we have no use for the other, the new box that's in storage. So we're requesting that it be sold. And so I have resolution 2020-102 declaring the property excess and authorizing advertising for sale.
Questions, concerns?
Good idea.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2020-102?
I make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Seven H, approve resolution 2020-103 authorizing acceptance of donation.
This is the committee for the challenge course. They continue to move forward with pursuing donations for the course. Most of the donations will come through the Sock Center Area Community Foundation. And as a prerequisite for the release of the funds from the foundation to the city, the foundation is requesting a resolution be adopted, authorizing the acceptance. As you know, in our consent calendar, we always have a resolution accepting things that we've already received. They need the resolution according to their bylaws prior to them releasing the funds. So I have then in front of you is resolution 2020-103 authorizing an acceptance of a donation in the amount of $150,000 from the Sock Center Area Community Foundation.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2020-103?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Unfinished business, labor contract negotiations?
The labor contract negotiations are scheduled for the 30th, which is Monday, Monday, the 30th. And at this point, I think it's going to end up being a Zoom meeting. I can't tell you for sure, but I will let you know. And so, and I think we just have a couple, couple things to iron out. I think they're pretty, we're pretty close to having it final. And so hopefully, if that happens, then you'll have it back on the council on December 2nd.
Do we have a time for that?
Pardon me?
What time?
It's, I don't know, I'm going to have to let you know.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's at 10 o'clock, but I better, I better look on my calendar.
It's not on my calendar, that's why I was looking.
I'll shoot you an email.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else on labor contract?
Nope.
Okay. New business, we got the council member vacancy. As you can see, Keith Johnson's chair is vacant. And he wrote us a letter to the mayor, city council administrators in Sock Center, Minnesota. Having sold my residence in Sock Center and moved to a neighboring city, I am resigning my city council seat effective immediately. This was dated on November 12th. I do this with a heavy heart. This position has grown on me and made me aware of the wonderful community Sock Center truly is. I would like to thank the city administrators and staff, the mayor, past and present, and council, and especially the citizens of Sock Center for their support over the last 12 years. I hope I serve them well. I always try to. I wish you all the best in the future. Sincerely, and respectfully yours, Keith Johnson. So with that, that announces the council member vacancy.
So we have two, two things you can do. You know, we can accept it and just let it sit vacant until January 1st, when the new term starts. Or you could accept it and you could appoint Shallen to fill that last month until January 1st. So you have, you know, the two different options. They, you know, we have only two meetings in December, so I don't know that it's a real big deal to have the seat filled. However, with the things going on with COVID, you know, we very well could have a situation where I can't have a quorum and it might be beneficial to have that extra person. So I'm going to leave it up to the council. I did warn Shallen ahead of time that this is a potential that could happen. So he won't be completely shocked. So I will leave it up to you.
Okay. I'll start. I actually think that it wouldn't be a bad deal to put Shallen in position right away. Because we start doing our, but, you know, not so much budget as, as fee schedules and everything else and appointments of different boards at the council level. We don't do it until January, but it'd be easier to get him in these two meetings of getting his feet wet before we really dive into his terms. So that's my opinion. I don't have a problem with it at all, with appointing him starting in the first meeting in December.
I agree with you, Chief.
Yeah. I would agree. I mean, he's been elected, he's going to start serving in January, so we have open spots.
I don't think one month is going to make a difference as far as how long a term he's sitting on. So. Okay. Well then, I think you know, at the next meeting, then he'll officially.
So I need a motion for that, Ben.
I will make that motion to declare the position vacant and appoint Shallen Wilber to the position effective December 1st. First meeting?
Yeah, first meeting in December.
First meeting in December.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe, second by Diane. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Our people now find a different camera first. We'll then move on to our consent agenda. We have scheduled unpaid claims of $178,446.00 for a total of the same amount. We have October checks, paid claims slash payroll of $1,500, or $5,682.05. We have resolution 2020-101 accepting contributions of $100 from Burn and Jeanette Pfeffer to be allocated to the police department. Girl Scout cookies from the Girl Scout Troop 171. We have gowns and N95 masks from the Sock Center Fire Department. Homemade masks for the, from Sue Cardinal. Kids pillows and pillowcases from Linda Thum. Peaches from Jan Pallow. Gift bags for EMS workers from Dan Welly. Face shields from Center Care Clinic. Homemade shoe protectors from Jan Pallow. Stuffed animals from Santana Upas Family. Guys and tape from Janet and John Tracy. Blankets for kids from Nyasunder. And stuffed animals from Brianna Ossendorf. And all those last ones listed would be all allocated to go, go to the ambulance department. And on behalf of the city, I want to thank those people and groups for their contributions in this type of thing that's all definitely. in this type of thing, is all definitely grateful, so. And then we have gambling application for exempt permit request from Socks Center Lions Club for a raffle on April first, twenty twenty-one at the Central Minnesota Federal Credit Unit. Is there any questions? Concerns about the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just a couple of things, of course, your spectrum or charter lineup changes again are in your packet and then to a reminder that the notice, or the public hearing on the budget and property taxes will be at the next city council meeting, December second at six thirty. Everybody received their notice of potential property taxes to be paid in twenty twenty-one. That reflects all the budgets submitted from all the different governing agencies and that is the budget that we will be talking about that night. So other than that, that's really all I have.
Any questions on the informational items? Hearing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.